Okay, there we are. Welcome to the meeting, the special meeting of the Zoning Design Review Board for Thursday, April 25th, 2019. I will call the meeting to order and roll call.
Member Pina?
Here.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Zagorsik?
Here.
Chair Cook?
Here.
Let the record show that Vice Chair Tiger is excused.
And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? And if not, would somebody make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've adopted the agenda. Is there any public who would like to make comments on items that are not on the agenda tonight? I don't see anybody, so I will close the public comment. And we can move on to the public hearing for 19-2106, the general plan. Before the staff report, I will just say that we received three letters regarding, with some comments, from members of the public. We received zero E comments. All three of the comments were regarding the second story of the Vista condos. One had an additional item that was removed in a follow-up letter. So, staff wants to go ahead with their staff reports?
Good evening. Tonight, we are here to share with you the envisioned Yountville general plan. And as you know, you last saw this document at your meeting earlier this month where we received feedback and comments from you that we've incorporated into really a final set of suggested revisions that are included as attachment four to the staff report. And the focus of tonight's meeting is really to go over those final revisions to ensure that we have your consensus support and to get a recommendation to take to the county council on whether to approve the general plan and to certify the final EIR. Tonight, we also have with us our environmental consultant Christine O'Rourke, who worked with staff in drafting the general plan, and our environmental consultant with de novo in case there are questions about the environmental impact report. So I'll turn it over to Christine now.
Thank you, Sandra. And good evening to Chair Cook and board members. So, I'm going to start off by going through the changes that we've made in response to the comments that we received from the board a couple of weeks ago. So hopefully, put this up so that the members of the public could read this as well, but I'll go through them. Some of them a little bit quicker than the other ones, like the first one, which was just a spelling mistake.
Are you going to go through every one?
Thought I'd go through all of them, yes.
Okay.
Just taking one at a time, and we can talk about them after each one.
I think that would make sense if we have any questions. Okay.
All right.
If anybody has any questions between them, bring them up.
And, you know, we were very detailed, and if we've missed anything also, let us know. We could, you know, at the end, let us know if we missed any of your comments. So the first one was a misspelling, so we've corrected that. The second one, we were talking about the retail uses that would be allowed in the North Washington Street area. And in other areas in the plan, it says, we had changed it to underrepresented retail. So there was this one place on page 11 that we needed to make that change. But there was also a question about lodging that had come up, and does lodging include service? And we did take a look at the zoning code, and we both, we all agreed that it does not include lodging. So that would not be one of the uses that's envisioned in this overlay district for the North Washington area. The next comment was regarding page 40, and we had some concern about the forecasted increases in population and whether that was going to be applied kind of across the board to the town, recognizing that we have different rates of population increases that we're expecting at the Veterans Home versus the rest of the town. So we looked at the plan, and we noted here in the response that there are a couple of places where it's talked about in the text. There's also a table that describes the changes in the two areas. We also wanted to just be clear that the EIR is not just kind of applying a blanket population projection, that we're actually looking at a parcel-by-parcel basis, including the Veterans Home, when they did their analysis. So for those reasons, we didn't feel like there was any changes that we needed to make to the general plan.
Did that answer your concerns and questions?
I guess, I was curious just mainly about the broader factors, which basically say, how is the number determined? And was the number determined in broad sense and then just apportioned to the Veterans Home and the town? Or was the actual context of the Veterans Home considered in the forecast itself?
So the forecasts that we're using in that table are coming from the Association of Bay Area Government. So when they're coming up with the forecast, they probably were also looking at the master plan for the Veterans Home, which was including additional beds at that home. So that's, that's, you know, that would be why they were assuming that there was going to be the additional residents there. They also look at, they look at the general plan to see, you know, what the policies in the general plan is, what the build-outs are of general plans when they come up with those forecasted numbers as well. But they're also looking at just formation of households, you know, migration, population growth, you know, just birth rates and death rates. So there's a lot of things that go into their forecasting.
Is it fair to say it's as educated a guess as they could provide?
It is, yes, yes. And it changes every single time they do, they do these. And a lot of times, they're changing them backwards as well, so.
Yeah. So that was my main question, and you answered it. Thank you.
Okay, great. So then, we'll move on to the next one. There was a question about whether the town can require disclosure of neighboring residential rental permits at time of sale. And so Sandra did talk with the town attorney, and the town attorney says that yes, the town can require disclosure at the time of sale, both letting the new homeowner know that there is a property, a neighboring property, that's enrolled in the rental registration program, also that, just in general, about the town's prohibition on short-term rentals. So he, however, recommended that rather than putting in a general plan policy, that we proceed with an ordinance to do that. So we can do that in the future.
Okay.
The next one was, is just something that we noticed as we were going through. There was an "and" missing for zoning and design review board. And then the third one on this slide, pages 60 and 61. So this was the question about the drawings that we've, the illustrations that we're using to kind of illustrate certain design principles on these properties. So we had a lot of discussion last time about using, you know, maybe we should use black and white, maybe we should use grayscale. So we've provided those to you, and this is some of them that we provided. So we're just kind of, would like to know what the board thinks, you know? We can either, again, there was talk about just cutting them out entirely, but if you had a recommendation, that we would let the council know what your recommendation was for that.
Why don't we go through that right now, and then we don't have to go back?
Sure.
If that's okay? Yeah, I think that's an improvement, which, do you have a preference, one or the other?
It's also on the back of the matrix attachment, if you want to look at it.
I like the black and white line drawing the best.
I do as well.
I agree.
Okay. That's four, for the black and whites.
So I'll note that now, and then after you get your public comment, if you want to change that recommendation.
Okay.
We can do that. All right, next. So there was, the board was saying last time that you would really like to know what the height is of the V marketplace roof. So staff did go out and contracted with a surveyor to do that. So the V marketplace is about 35 feet high to the roof, not to the coupla's in addition. And the Maison Fleury is about 32 and a half feet. So Sandra had noticed that the heights are a little low for three-story buildings, but there are design techniques that could be employed to make that work. So when we note in the plan that says that there wouldn't be, it would not go any higher than the V marketplace roof, we're talking about 35 feet.
Okay. So we're talking with, we are looking at a reasonable height, not overly high for three-story?
Yes, and in reference, that's five feet taller than the current height limit of 30 feet for the commercial zone.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, the next comment was about the farmworker housing and why it was called out. So our response here is just kind of talking about the state law that requires agricultural employee housing to be a permitted use whenever it's in agricultural district. And the municipal, the town's municipal code actually echoes what the state law is and how, what their definition is for agricultural employee housing. So just to be consistent, we're recommending that we change that term. It had said farmworker housing to agricultural employee housing, so now it's consistent with the town's municipal code.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So you're basically clarifying that the current zoning carries with it a variety of state-related stipulations, and you're just reflecting those here?
That's correct. The next comment, this was about the FAR that was proposed in the general plan for the agricultural district and why we were proposing a 0.05. And as we had talked about at the last, at the last meeting, we were suggesting the 0.05, which is significantly lower than all the FAR for the other districts, of course. It's just an upper limit, and that this really needs to be kind of ironed out in the zoning code when we do the zoning code update, and that it could, one option would be that we would have a sliding scale for the FAR. So if it's a smaller parcel, maybe 0.5, it works, but if we're talking about 30 acres, maybe it should be less than that. And that that's something that, as long in the, for the designation that's in the general plan, you just have, we have to identify the maximum that's going to be allowed. So the zoning district itself can have a lower threshold. So just to be clear, we are proposing that we add this paragraph to the end of the text on page 65, and I'll just read it. It says, "The maximum densities and intensities identified in Table LU2 are an upper limit and are not guaranteed. Maximum densities and intensities for zoning districts may be established at a lower threshold in the town zoning code. Residential density and building intensity on any site shall respond to site resources and constraints, neighborhood context, potentially hazardous conditions, sensitive environmental conditions, traffic and access, adequacy of infrastructure, and town design policies." I think we've covered them all. But just to be really, you know, really clear that we're talking about maximums.
I like that, a good addition. Anybody have any comments? Okay. Excellent.
Okay, the next one was about program LU 3.6A, and the question really was, why was there so much detail in this program? So we kind of went back and looked through everything. It came about, it's a best pack practices program, especially for communities that just feel that they might have some issues about capacity of infrastructure or availability of utilities somewhere in the future. So it really, although this is going to be, this, utilities and infrastructure are analyzed in the SEQA documents, this way, we actually kind of make it very clear what the process is. We're also identifying what the specific thresholds would be for mitigation, which are service deterioration or capacities being exceeded. Those aren't really called out in SEQA. And also potential mitigation projects. So project redesign, of course, is always one of those mitigation measures, but also developer funding of improvements in addition to the impact fee. So that just kind of gives the town a little bit more latitude in making sure that the new development is kind of, is going to be kind of paying its way, and that there is adequate infrastructure and utility capacity. So, any other questions about that program?
No. Don't think so?
No? Okay. All right. Next, on page 79, this is program LU 6.2B, and this is the program about rezoning Humboldt to commercial use. And so we talked about the second-story rental housing units, and so the ZDRB wanted to allow at least one of those units to be a permanent residence for the owner of the property. So we were proposing this new change to the language in that program. So it would say, "require two-second-story rental housing units in any development proposal, and then one of the units may be used as non-rental residential housing, subject to a use permit." Does that satisfy the concern?
It's not, is it, would it be a special use permit just for that unit?
Yes.
Okay. So they would have to apply to use one of the units created in this specific way? Okay, so they may or may not, but it leaves them the option?
Yeah. It's part of our exception to allow based on the language, and otherwise, the rental unit. And this is language that was presented by the town attorney.
Oh, okay. And once that use permit was in place for that specific address, A or B, it would stay with?
In front of the land, so as long as an owner is residing in the unit.
As long as it allowed an owner to reside in the unit, it would be triggered?
Okay.
And as is done with other properties, all of that will likely be done at the time of the master development plan, once that's approved by ZDRB and Town Council through that process.
Okay. That makes sense. Everybody good with that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next change is in regard to the figure of the pedestrian or the bicycle paths. And so it was noted that although we had made the change to the map, the text was still inconsistent, so we're proposing a revision to make that consistent now. So it'll say that a section of the Hopper Creek path north of Fennell Road is also a Class 1 path, but the other sections are too narrow to accommodate both bicycles and pedestrians, so clarify that.
Okay, that makes sense.
The next change is to the figure, this is the pedestrian pathways, and there were a couple of sidewalks that were incorrect, so we've identified exactly what needs to be changed here. Moving the Yountville Cross Road sidewalk west of Mesa Court to the north side of the road, I think it's on the south side now, and then to end the northern limit of the Yount Street sidewalk at the end of the condominium parcel. So we will have those changes made to the map.
Okay. I get that, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then finally, it was noted that the figure for the vegetation cover was not accurate, especially where it's showing deciduous orchids, orchards, excuse me, where there is, where it's actually been developed with the golf course in the Washington Park neighborhood. So we, the environmental consultant went back and looked at that, and it's a state map, and it's the best available data that there is. It's not correct, but it's what we need to use. So we're just adding the source to that and then identifying that, you know, it's the best available land cover, the data's spanning from 1990 to 2014.
That makes sense, as long as it's sourced, and so people understand it could be an old map.
It was a good change. So that is all of the changes that we have.
Excellent, thank you. So is that the end of your staff report?
So that's the end of our staff report, right? So I think now would be public comment.
Move on to public comment.
We can answer any other additional questions that might come up.
Excuse me. Okay, do we have any public that would like to come up and comment before we move on? Please come on up to the microphone and state your name.
Good evening. I'm Carl Straub, and my wife Beebe is here with us. We live behind the two lots on North Washington that are proposed to be made commercial. We have an objection towards that. I think I would be happy, and I'll talk very frankly, if the zoning was form-based zoning, rather than whether it's commercial or residential. We're concerned about height, we're concerned about parking, and we're concerned about the three of us in those three houses, which are the ones that are most affected by this project. We would love to hear more details about it. And while I see all the wonderful sketches and the information, we've never seen that unless I go to the plan. I have a concern that, and this is really, in a sense, a form of spot zoning. We are on the edge of Old Town. When we moved here, Old Town was sacred. It has that designation. We also know that if this was residential, two-story would be hard, because I believe there's 50% or more of the houses on that block are two stories. So we would like to see this thought out a little better and not wrapped in a plan change when effectively it's spot zoning. We all understand the differences that are growing, the urbanization of Yountville mix uses. We all believe in that, and we would love to see those two lots developed with houses and residential, not commercial. And I'm taken back by noting how much the plan is really wrapped around this one parcel, calling underdeveloped uses for retail in this town. I don't know what that means. And it seems like we're putting a lot of restrictions on the use of a property simply to make it fit within a form factor. Our view would be, let's approach it, whether it's commercial or residential, I'm not really that concerned about it. What I am concerned is that the form factor resembles residential, and the traffic resembles residential, and the design is such that height is considered, where the location of the property, where parking is. And all of those, I can tell you based on discussions with neighbors, are at the total opposite of what we'd like. This is the first, how do I call it, creeping change in Old Town, in the essence that where does it end? You've now started commercial in Old Town. So does that mean two blocks away should have commercial? And isn't that always the discussion about spot zoning? When you put a commercial in a residential area, it's okay if it's at the end of the block, it's not okay if it's in the middle of the block? And so what we're really trying to figure out is, where does this lead us? And I don't think any of the homes behind it have had any consideration as to, as I said, height, form factor of design. I'm not opposed to it being developed. In fact, we'd love to see a development on there other than noxious weeds and an empty lot, and I think that would be good. The last item I'll comment on is when we were one of the first ones to build an ADU in the town, and when we went through that process, unfortunately, you weren't involved because it was an ADU, and it went to council and was appealed, there were all kinds of arguments about, and from our neighbor Clark, and from other local homes in the area about the two stories. And so we worked with the city and came out with a one-story house. It's great. We invite you all to come over and see the ADU, but now we're going in front of us, and we're proposing a second story. It just doesn't seem like there's logic, inconsistency in what the design and height is in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public that has some comments? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Brian Pels, 655 Yount. I actually, he made my job really easy, because I really agree with everything he just said. And I'd just like to voice my support for exactly what he said. One more comment, and by the way, thank you guys, I mean, this is a spectacular, like, really comprehensive, detailed plan, you know? There's a lot of hard work going into it. I do have a question about parking in general, because I note that everything on the west side of Washington, and if I look at it, if I counted today, about 400-something parking spaces over there in that, in the area that is proposed to, you know, and that's substantially like all of the non-street, non-city parking in the town, non-private. What would be the plan, or what's, how is that envisaged? Because I kind of, I really want to, I'm concerned that we don't end up with sort of a wag the dog kind of situation where we say, yeah, we can do all of this development there, but then later on, we end up, you know, well, the city's going to underwrite a $20 million parking structure, and, you know, all of a sudden, things are not really as we kind of envisaged at the beginning. And I was wondering kind of what the comments are on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And anybody else want to come up and make some comments before we close? Come on up.
Hello, my name's Rich Woodson. I'm the resident at 2008 Humboldt Street, and I'm also the owner of these two lots that are under consideration. I just want to thank you for taking the time to consider this proposal. It's something that's been actually years in the planning and consideration of how to do this, how to correct this zoning error in a way that is the best for the town and best for the residents, and is also something that our visitors can enjoy. And we've gone to a great deal of effort to ensure that we've gotten opinions from everyone, including my family, who also lives a few blocks down, other neighbors, the neighboring business, Cindy Gates, and in fact, Hank, who's one of the folks of the three buildings that Mr. Straub was referring to. I don't know if he is speaking on behalf of all three neighbors or not. Did they submit a formal objection? I'm certain he's not speaking on behalf of Hank, because I know he's in support of the project. So in that consideration of this corner lot, it's completely unsuitable as a residence as it's currently zoned. Anybody that spends any time there on that corner will see the hordes of people walking up and down that street all the time. Any house that was there would have thousands of people looking in the living room and bedroom window, especially on the weekend and throughout the day. In the evening, they would be treated to the loud parties that are held at the various hotels and directly across the street. The bachelor parties and bachelorette parties disembarking. I'm several blocks, several lots away, and I still hear every note. So it'd be completely unsuitable for anybody to have to live in those conditions. Conversely, it's a wonderful central location for the people of this town and the visitors to this town to access services that they need, that this town doesn't currently supply. The services that I am trying to get placed there are a pharmacy that serves more of the remedial needs that people will have in a town other than what a three-by-five section of ranch market can supply. Also, a prescription pharmacy that will prevent people from having to drive 10 miles south or 10 miles north to get the things that they need for their health. But more so for the children and the young people of this community to have an old-timey soda fountain, as was common in pharmacies at the time, on a countertop where they can sit and meet with their friends and develop fond memories of their childhood in Yountville, having a sundae or a Coke float at the counter while looking out at all the tourists walking back and forth. On the other two units below, I'm not quite as concerned of what would go there, but I would like to see a bookstore or florist. The florist would satisfy the needs of the numerous restaurants and hotels for cut flowers. In addition, gentlemen, or anyone coming home that wanted to get some cut flowers for their dinner party or whatever, could easily stop by and pick those up and supply them. At one time, I thought a dry cleaner satellite would be a good option there, but now because of delivery of greens cleaners, I don't think that's quite as pressing of a need in this town. You've seen our home, you know what we've built, and we were very careful to build something that we thought was beautiful, represented the values of the town, and my wife, who's an interior designer, specified every single nut and bolt that went in that place. We'll have a similar care and consideration for what we build there. It will not resemble what is in the drawing necessarily, but it will be oriented towards the street in that form. But it will very much complement the other buildings that we have in town and be timeless. We have people come, my wife, Kara, who's here today, has color cards and samples and names of architects and contractors. names of architects and contractors because every weekend, at least one person comes knocking on our door asking about those specifications and we're happy to supply them for them. I think they will be similarly pleased with what is developed on that lot. As far as the impact to the neighbors to the rear of that property, whether it's residential or commercial, if it were residential, there would be a barrier there anyway. There would be a six-foot barrier if a house was built. If it's commercial, it may be somewhat higher to abate the noise. But really, all we're talking about from their perspective is the difference between a two-foot differential on the barrier. And I don't think a two-foot differential on the barrier should rob the people of this town of services that were locally serving of this nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had two more members of the public sneak in. Do either of you have public comments that you would like to come up and make before we close the public comments? Okay. Okay. Then I will close the public comment. I would just like to say, in general reference to the letters and the comments that were made, that there was extensive community, opportunities for the community to be involved and to have their input. And thank you to everybody who worked on this for, it was an incredibly open discussion for the planning of the general plan. And all the opinions were taken in and focused in the right directions. Changing things to residential scaled commercial, when that helps describe it, talking about parking on the west side of Washington, Vista condos, second stories, they will all fall under all the zoning ordinances that we have. And they will all be, have appropriate time for viewing and discussion and development to make it so they're all appropriate because I think we all have the same goals for Yountville. And I lost my next train of thought, but there will be time for all that. Oh, the drawings and the sketches were pretty, they were to be informative, but they were basically decorative. They were not plans for anything that's being built in any way. It's just laying out the foundation for what might be possible for the future in Yountville. If you were on tag and you have any other comments to explain that?
That's well said. And it was very, was a year, almost a year in planning with the envisioned, the tag committee. And all of these things, all of these concerns were taken into perspective and listened to and hopefully incorporated as much as we could while allowing a vision of 20 years. We have to remember, we're not doing it all today or tomorrow or a month from now, but we're looking 20 years out. And it's just really important to keep that in mind, trying to keep it as broad as possible, but yet have some kind of structure to it.
Perfect. We have closed public comment, yeah.
I had one more comment or response to on that topic. And I guess it was mainly around the language that I read for the parcel that was, you know, repeatedly says residential scaled commercial. So there is the idea that anything that needs, that would go there, whether it were residence or residence scale, commercial would occupy the same form. And I know that staff in particular heard about that multiple times from the tag that it's, that care would be placed and not seeing it as sort of an infringement of commercial into Old Town, rather enforcing the Old Town character, given its geography adjacent to the main street and that, that the appropriate hybrid solution would be put in place in the same level of scrutiny that would go into a residence occupying that would go into a mixed-use building. And the other consideration that would go into it would be the fact that it's adjacent to residential. And I know that from what I've seen, the council in particular takes great care in making sure that the lives of residents aren't disrupted. And so the zoning allows for something to happen, the guidelines ensure that it doesn't go beyond what's permitted. And then the decision-making process factors in all of the concerns that I would have if I were in your situation. I will point out one thing, I noticed we talked about the black and white drawing. I did catch one of those, that the black and white drawing actually that you included looks different than the color drawing. It looks like there's an extension. I don't, did you notice that?
Yes, you caught it. It's the only, we don't have that one in a black and white line drawing that shows the photo in the plan. So we'd have to amend that somewhere.
And I'll maintain that the, I've been pretty, more vocal than average on the contentious nature of these concept drawings because, and I've said it before, but I'll say it again, is that you can't put something in front of somebody and say, well, it's not going to look like that. You say, well, you just put something in front of me that looks like something. And so it's, it creates a sort of a mental conflict between, look at this, but don't look at this. So it, you know, and it will continue to happen. So to the extent that we can just reinforce the people who are involved, I've sort of come to accept that this is sort of a necessary point of reference, knowing that it's very heavily caveated. So I would just echo that again, based on my experience working through it.
Okay. I think we've had our discussion as we went through the items that were changed, that we asked to be changed. Does anybody have any further comments?
I do. I do. One of the things that we talked about at our last meeting that I didn't see addressed in this was consistency of language around the allowable three stories. We talked significantly about making sure that that language was all consistent. In the plan, we have cases where it says certain things may be considered or allowable or permitted. And I think that we want to be consistent in saying that ZDRB and Yountville Town Council will consider these items. And I also think, I've gotten a couple of phone calls, late-breaking phone calls today and yesterday, from folks in Old Town that are concerned and are also suggesting that if we use language like considered as opposed to allowable or permitted, that there is an ability for developers or people who are bringing projects to the fore can go through a general plan amendment process if need be to get a situation changed that doesn't, isn't reflected in the general plan. So those are just some of my concerns, specifically around the west side of Washington and west side of Highway 29.
So you're wanting to use of the word considered versus allowable or permitted?
We talked about that at the last meeting. There's places where it says allow, allowable, or considered or permitted. And that that language should all be pulled into a consistency.
Can you identify where it is in the plan?
It was in 5.3, I believe.
Okay, so as it relates to the change areas?
Yes.
Okay. Got all my notes all over it. Yeah, no, no, go ahead. I think I can find it. There's encourages.
Allowing here.
So that, so I see the allowing in that second to last paragraph. But isn't it all kind of covered by, the town will need to take further actions such as amending the zoning ordinance and design standards before development proposals could be considered? Wouldn't that kind of override, I mean, sort of tied together?
Yes.
Cover any?
Also, this is the narrative section that tries to generally capture the intent, but the real substance of the general plan is in each of the general goals and policies and programs. So if the language there is acceptable, this is something that supplements it. And as Chair Cook says, it is correct that this launches our next effort of a zoning and design ordinance update. I wish time, everything will be really considered and strictly scrutinized, really.
Yeah.
The detail, that's exactly it. The details come next. And we've tried to provide some answers in terms of how tall is the marketplace without going into those other considerations. On the Humboldt parcels, it's making the link to the residential scaled commercial district that already has somewhat form-based design standards as it's more about the form of the building than other districts in town because of the sensitive nature of it backing up to the residential. But again, we know this is the broad level policy to be followed up with more of the specifics later. With that said, however, if the narrative leaves anything to question or is confusing by the use of inconsistent terms, it'd be nice if we could identify where those are specifically now and just take a moment to read through it. And get some feedback.
Yeah, look at this first.
Yeah, yeah.
Because none of these are, none of these are going to be quoted as policy. These are the conceptual discussions of where we're going.
Right. And that was my question to you, Sandra, at the last meeting, in which your response was that the review of that would happen on a parcel or project-based basis. So when those come before us, those considerations will be addressed in zoning and policy at that time.
Yes, I look at it.
Which satisfied me, but it was difficult to communicate that to people who are reading this plan where language is used that says encourages or bonuses given or allowable, rather than considered on a parcel-by-parcel or project basis.
Okay. And really, before we get to that parcel-by-parcel consideration for development, we have the next interim step, which is to really more clearly define and add detail to the development standards. There's some quality to it in this plan, but a lot of it is left open still because it needs greater discussion at notice public hearings, greater input from the public. It's time to really narrow down the focus, to really understand what the details mean. This broad level discussion and this greater policy for the town over the 20-year period, it's just too much to get into now. We've tried to provide enough information to make it meaningful at this stage and to inform that later step. But it won't be anything that just is rubber stamped at any of the boards and commissions or councils, but is really truly discussed and vetted and tried to make sure that it's right for Yountville.
And I've heard that before and I just wanted to bring it up again.
Okay.
So that we could include it in this meeting so that people who are watching or listening or are in the audience can hear it once again.
Okay, thank you.
That makes sense. Okay.
I had, I said one comment, there was a public comment about parking. I figured it would be worthwhile addressing it. I found there are numerous references to parking in the general plan, but while you were deliberating, I, there's one passage I figured I would just read out that was reflective of my understanding of how it was being handled. So for example, on Washington Street, in reference to any development that would replace a surface lot, the development would need to address parking requirements, perhaps by making use of underground, tucked under or structured parking that is screened or lined with storefronts. Parking should be accommodated behind buildings and at the rear of the site. I remember in earlier, some of the earlier tag reviews, there were even some drawings and plans of parking structures covered in greenery that were rejected almost violently by anybody who saw them. So it was, there was a big discussion about what to do with parking. And the language that I saw here reflects the fact that it should be accessible and invisible for the most part. And any, any spot that gets removed, there's a whole parking assessment, any spot that gets taken away needs to be essentially accounted for based on what traffic and flow projections would account.
Yes, very much correct. I'd like to leave, give one more clarification, too. I'm not sure if I heard it right from the public. But those lots on the west side of Washington are private lots. They're not town-owned lots. There won't be a town-owned structure there. So that would be parking for that specific private-owned development for whatever they do, and it would have to meet the minimum standards and everything like you just said.
Okay. Anybody has any more comments? If not, then we can move back on to the resolution. How do we do that?
So you have a resolution before you. And in this resolution, we're seeking, the resolution, if adopted by you, would result in the recommendation that the town council approve or adopt the envisioned Yountville general plan and certify the final environmental impact report for this project. And if you agree with the action and the recitals and the findings in this resolution, we'd ask that you by motion take a vote to take that to the council.
Okay.
So in terms of the letters submitted, are those, are we required to discuss those or is that just data that comes up? Okay.
So we're good.
Okay, thank you.
We generally commented on them.
Agreed.
Okay. If everybody's in agreement, would somebody like to make a motion to accept or pass? Accept? To approve the resolution as presented?
Approve, there you go. Approve the resolution as presented tonight. I make a motion to approve the resolution number 19-01 as presented.
And a second?
Aye, second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
That was all four?
Was there a second?
There was.
I second. Yes, I second, sorry.
Now we're going to take it back and talk about it.
I don't like interrupting, so I just wait. Everyone looked my way, so I'm happily seconding.
And it was unanimous.
Okay, good.
Unanimous, aye.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work over the last two years and excited now to take this to the council.
This is exciting. This is a big moment. Okay. We can move on. Any staff reports we need to know about?
This is not the final step in the general plan adoption. Just want to make it clear that the resolution that was just adopted by the ZDRB was a recommendation to the town council. The town council will now be considering the general plan and that is scheduled for May 7th, Tuesday, May 7th at 6 o'clock in this room. Just want to make that for generations to understand when they go back and watch this video with their grandkids.
Generations.
And this is Nathan's last ZDRB meeting.
Yes.
And I want to say how wonderful it has been working with you, Nathan. It is always a pleasure. You are always there to answer our questions and we will miss you greatly.
Yes.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have to stay. Okay. Then I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.